Let me say good evening to all of us tonight as we prepare to call to order the agenda for the Muskogee City Council for September 26, 2022. Just before we go into tonight's meeting, we have several items that we want to highlight before we call the official meeting to order. And in the process of doing that, let me take this opportunity to publicly thank our city clerk, Ms. Tammy Tracy, who does everything she can to manage me at this microphone. Tammy goes unnoticed many times because of her title, which is city clerk, but the city clerk is a management position, one of the three managers that we manage here in the city of Muskogee, and she does an outstanding job coordinating Herculean efforts that are provided to her sometimes in time, but many times not on time by me and my colleagues. Yet she still does everything she can. Help me celebrate Tammy Tracy. October is manufacturing month. We are so blessed with our Muskogee City County Port Authority, and they'll tell us about the new rebranding name when they come to the microphone. This month I will be signing a proclamation, sorry, in October will be signing a proclamation for October being recognized as manufacturing month. We're fortunate in a community our size to have the average wage to be around $20, sometimes higher with the number of manufacturers that we have here in the city of Muskogee. We have several of them who are expanding and other businesses who desire to come to Muskogee. And so the City County Port Authority has done a wonderful job making certain that we have those type of opportunities for our city. And on that note, speaking to October as being manufacturing month, I'm going to ask Darla Heller to come, give us brief remarks about some of the highlights that we could expect during the month of October as manufacturing month. Ms. Heller.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will be brief. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. October is manufacturing month, and the reason we celebrate this industry is so that we can tell students about jobs that are available within that sector. So I just want to highlight a few things in addition to the proclamation signing that the mayor mentioned. Throughout the month, we will be highlighting our manufacturers through social media and billboards through with Indian Capital Technology Center. On October the 6th, we will recognize businesses and individuals that have supported business and industry here in Muskogee. So if you're not registered for that banquet, please let us know. We would love to have you. We have some great sponsors that made that possible. On October the 18th, we will have Manufacturing Day in Muskogee County, meaning we will send about 70 volunteers out to nine different school districts, and our focus that day is to talk to every ninth grader in Muskogee County about what careers are available from accounting to marketing to production engineering. So it's career awareness. So those efforts will be ongoing. There's also a few other tours that are being scheduled, but we just thank you for the opportunity to highlight this important sector in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. On the same note, in the manner in which I recognize Ms. Tracy, our Port Authority Director, Kimber Scott is also in the audience. Kimber has had a very storied career throughout our community, providing leadership in many support roles, but she is not in a support role now. She is the actual director of the Muskogee City County Port Authority, and certainly, Ms. Kimber Scott, we recognize you. Let's give her and her staff a hand. I want to take this opportunity to recognize Lillian Jacobs Leeds. She is a resident in our community who turns 100 years old. On Wednesday, she turns 100. Shirley Hilton Flannery and I will be visiting with her to give her a proclamation for her birthday. We encourage all of our residents, as you come into that era of life, certainly give us the opportunity to recognize you. Happy birthday to Lillian Jacobs Leeds. Let's give her a hand. We will now call to order officially the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for September 26, 2022. We will have the invocation by Councilmember Tracy McGee, followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Let us all bow hearts with a moment of prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for your son. We ask tonight that you guide us and lead us in a proper direction as we take on the business of the city. We ask you for healing and direction. We ask you to cause us to understand that even though we may not always agree, our main issue is the city of Muskogee. And I ask you to say hallelujah because it is the highest praise that we can give the Creator. So at this time, let us say hallelujah and amen.
Let's look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Here.
Thank you. We will now consider approval of the minutes of the City Council regular session for September 12th, 2022. I hope that all of us have had an opportunity to review those minutes. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second on those minutes. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. We have now considered the consent agenda, which consists of items numbers one through six. Are there any items that need to be moved to the regular agenda by a member of the council? Or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes. We have now considered item number seven.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance number 4170A to rezone approximately 3.7 acres, being more particularly described in the ordinance from R1, single-family residential, to R5, mobile home, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. This was an application filed by Ashley Campbell to rezone from R1 to an R5 for a modular home. The zoning is technically for mobile home. Ms. Campbell previously had a plat approved. This is the section of property that she owns that's highlighted in green. You can see that it's mostly surrounded by agriculture. On the top of her property, there are multiple different properties. This is a larger expanse of the area. Again, you can see it's mostly agriculture around there. This is the final plat, which has already been approved by Planning Commission and Council. It's for 3.7 acres, zoned into what, or set into one lot and one lot and one block, and that allows for only one mobile home, or in this case, a modular home. And again, you can see the site surrounded by mostly agricultural, and then the housing addition. And in that housing addition that's nearby, there are mobile homes, trailers, and other modular homes already in that area. So this is nothing that's going to, we feel, detract from the value of the surrounding Planning Commission has recommended approval, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhammer. We have one resident signed to speak to this agenda item. Ronald Thomas, if you will come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
Ronald Thomas, 4753 Gulick Street, Muskogee, Oklahoma. I'm going to read through this, guys. I apologize, I had dental surgery earlier. On December 6, 2021, we attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Ms. Campbell mentioned she did not have funding to build a home at the time, and it was more cost-effective to bring a mobile home. Understandable because building materials were very expensive at that time, but have recently gone down. During that December 6 meeting, I offered to purchase Ms. Campbell's property for 20% more than what she had paid for it to relieve her of the property since she had mentioned in the meeting she was unable to afford new residential construction. She declined this offer. Ultimately, her request to rezone was denied that day by the Planning and Zoning Board. She later withdrew her application for the Public Works meeting slated that evening. Around the middle of August 2022, we noticed that footings for a mobile home had been poured. I called the Planning and Zoning Commission because I thought this matter had been concluded and was referred to the Inspection Department. They stated there was no permit on file and sent an inspector out to investigate. A brief follow-up with the inspector concluded that nothing could be done because it was just concrete in the ground. Under normal circumstances, per building code, a person would need a footing inspection since there was no permit. It was just concrete in the ground because no one knew her intentions. A few weeks later, Ms. Campbell filed an application to rezone her property, this time on a three-acre plat, which you guys have there. As we discussed in the Public Works meeting on the 19th of September 2022, adding a mobile home will further decrease property values for surrounding residents. I confirmed this with a few different appraisers via phone. They stated that it would have an adverse effect on their professional, professional Recently, it's come to our attention that the city of Muskogee is working with Clayton Christie with Olson, an engineering firm based out of Joplin, Missouri. I've communicated with them via email and via phone. My understanding is the city of Muskogee has intentions to take on a multimillion-dollar project installing a detention pond. This will be bordering approximately 250 foot of my property, the northern border, and widening the Smith Ferry roadway in front of Hildale Middle High School. This is great news and big improvements to the city of Muskogee and the area. It's also come to my attention that the city of Muskogee is going to be entering a request to purchase an easement from me to complete this project, but an appraisal and formal offer has not been made as of yet. This is the city's intentions, from my understanding of visiting with Clayton Christie with Olson Engineering. Also stopped by Mike Stewart's office at this time, he said they don't have updated plans on this. If the city lets Ms. Campbell proceed with rezoning, this will without a doubt decrease my property value, causing my property to depreciate before the offer is made. I question if, is this a conflict of interest? And does this cause unfair trade with the upcoming transaction? In a recent appraisal that was requested by my bank in January for a HELOC loan, our property value was over 1.5 million. Ms. Campbell's 23-acre property borders 1,300 foot of my 60 acres to the west. So I'm going to hit on that for just a second. In that picture they had of the map, Ms. Campbell's property is near some homes that have been reestablished to kind of look nicer as mobile homes, I think, by putting a brick facade. Although I would believe that myself and the gentleman that was in here last week are affected tremendously due to her acreage is bordering majority of the back of our property. In fact, all of it, not really a majority, but our property is the same length. Councilmembers, we've put a lot of work into our property on South Gulick and our businesses in the city of Muskogee. We're always focused on the best interest of the community along with our neighbors. It seems like we're overlooking the fact that Ms. Campbell possibly violated Muskogee Municipal Building Code to push this matter to be accepted when she had concrete footings installed with no permit with the city. In another attempt to help Ms. Campbell, I could recommend some great home builders that would be able to work in her desired budget. I request the city of Muskogee deny Ms. Campbell's request to rezone, or at least delay this matter for further discussion.
Mr. Thomas, your time is up.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
Okay.
While we're in the public hearing, and he has signed up to speak, does any member of the council have any questions for Mr. Thomas? Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I also have these documents here if anybody would like to view them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now close the public hearing. We've heard the presentation from Ms. Bodenhammer and the presenter on tonight, Mr. Thomas, whether it's a pleasure of the body.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number seven to approve as presented by Ms. Bodenhammer. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, item number seven passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval to direct staff to bring back an amendment to ordinance number 4154A, codified as Article 23, Specific Use Permits, creating a new zoning classification for commercial medical marijuana businesses, or take other necessary action.
Just before we go to Mr. Reynolds, let me say about item number seven that I want to personally thank, Mr. Tucker, Ms. Bodenhammer, and their staff. They have done an outstanding job managing the zoning process. We now have a new planning and zoning director, Dr. Salix. I hope I said your name correctly. While you're here tonight, I certainly want to thank you for, for being here and being a part of Team Muskogee. Thank you. Mr. Reynolds.
This is my item. The special use permit, it's, it's been, it's a little confusing, it's difficult to understand, and it kind of puts us in an awkward position of choosing who does what. And I would like that to, I'd like to reevaluate that and take a good look at it and see if we can't do something better, or possibly look at other options.
What is the recommendation for staff to come back with?
Yes.
Okay.
For staff to take a look at this and for us also to discuss this and see if we can't come up with some other options. It seems like each time we have someone coming to us, it's a unique circumstance, and it puts us in an awkward position of trying to pick or choose what to do.
Mr. Tucker, do we need a motion, or can we take it as a direction to staff?
We can take that as a direction to staff.
And can we also ask staff to schedule our routine communication lunches where we can have that in the more?
Yeah, because in order for us to prepare something, we'll need some additional guidance as to what you are looking for. We can do an independent review, but it would also be helpful to make sure that we're headed in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is that fine, Mr. Reynolds? Is that okay?
That works.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or discussion by the council before we move to the next item? Thank you. Item number nine.
Consider approval of ordinance 4171A repealing Chapter 54, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 4, Division 3, Panhandling, including Section 54-152, Registration Required, and Section 54-153, Registration Procedures, or take other necessary action.
This is my agenda item. So to members of the council, law enforcement, emergency management services, Green Country Behavior Health, and a number of our local agencies have been overwhelmed battling issues associated with homelessness. It is unfortunate that approximately 98% of the homeless people interviewed have been trafficked in our community by those living in outlined areas. This amounts to nothing more than human trafficking. They are being dropped off to Muskogee from areas such as northwest Arkansas, north Texas, Louisiana, and surrounding areas within and without our own county. It is impossible and even impractical to expect local taxpayers to assume the burden of providing for others who are purposely being displaced by their communities into Muskogee. Issuing a safety vest for the express purpose of panhandling has not remedied our homeless situation. When this ordinance was originally drafted, the intention was that we would issue a safety vest and that those individuals who would panhandle would also register with our Gospel Rescue Mission to assist, to get the assistance that they need as they transition from homelessness to being successful. And while the Gospel Rescue Mission has been very successful in transitioning several of our local residents, many of those who apply for a panhandling license has refused to participate in the Gospel Rescue Mission program. Therefore, the program as it was designed to help is now worse than it's ever been with people taking advantage of what has been offered by our taxpayers by sending their homeless people into our community. It is unfortunate that we are where we are, but something needs to be done to address this issue so that it protects our citizenry and our public and our reputation as a community that's trying to grow. Therefore, my motion is as presented in item number nine, that we repeal the section calling for registration and issuance of the provisions for the purpose of panhandling. And that would be my motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, Ms. McGee.
So you said when this program was put together, it was for that sole purpose of the homelessness, homeless people to serve as panhandlers? Because I know a lot of panhandlers, they're not homeless. So how would that affect those that try to make an extra income?
Mr. Tucker could probably speak more to that, but my understanding is that when they set up this program, one of the target goals was that they would be able to assist people who were panhandling, who were actually homeless.
So yes, there were a couple of reasons when this was done, and let's say 2012, and it has been amended, I think, three or four times since then. Originally, what we, what was designed by the ordinance was what the mayor said, but also to ensure that folks weren't panhandling in busy intersection, causing a safety issue for themselves and the members of the traffic, or the members of, people who were in vehicles who were stopping traffic in order to give money. And so that was what was, it was intended to solve. And what ended up happening was when we required a permit for panhandling, many folks who were not homeless but were just looking for additional income, took that to mean that the city of Muskogee permitted, meaning allowed, panhandling. So panhandling is a First Amendment right, as our Supreme Court says. And so our intent was not to permit it because it's already permitted it anyway. But nonetheless, it seemed to give some people who were outside of the community the belief that we encouraged and welcomed, and that was, of course, not the intent when the ordinance was originally passed. It had to do with public safety and to be able to offer services to those who in fact were homeless. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Roy, in changing this, will this, another reason we went this route also was to address like the firefighters and their Labor Day solicitations?
That they, their participation and their activity will not be impacted by repealing the registration. They will be permitted to continue with their activity, but they will not have to register.
Sounds good.
We have a motion on item number nine. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number nine. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, item number nine passes. Item number 10.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4172A, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordnances by amending Chapter 90, Zoning, Article 23, Specific Use Permits, Section 90-23-03, Specific Use Permit List, by adding day center slash shelter facilities, adding repealer severability, and declaring an emergency, or take other necessary action.
This is my item to members of the council. Item number 10 runs concurrent to item number nine. In the unlikely event that an entity, individual, or otherwise desires to establish a day shelter or other shelter facility in the city of Muskogee, it should be subject to the same requirements as other entities listed for the purposes of obtaining a special use permit. The residents of Muskogee should have ample warning and opportunity to express themselves on this issue, as well as allow their elected officials to know how they feel about the possibility of a day shelter or homeless-type shelter going into their neighborhood or community. This ordinance change gives us the tools that we need to manage how we address homelessness or the need for shelters or other shelters in our communities. And my motion is as presented in item number 10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 10. Do we have any further discussion?
I do have one question on this.
Yes, Mr. Reed.
Okay, so in, in, in response to complaint that we've received numerous times on the halfway house, would this cover something like that as well?
Mr. Tucker.
I think halfway house is already included in there. The issue, Deputy Mayor Reed, is what the courts have determined a halfway house to be. And so the one that was specifically addressed a few weeks ago is the, a court, a federal court has determined that the Oxford House does not meet the definition of a halfway house because there are no supervision. It is just a conglomeration of individuals who are living together who meet the definition of a family. And so that has been litigated throughout the country, and the Oxford House has always prevailed in those instances when it comes to making a determination as to whether they meet the definition of a halfway house or simply a family for purposes of the international codes.
So not getting off subject, is there something additionally that we can do to protect neighborhoods and, you know, neighbors from being able to be cautioned and aware, you know, when these items come in their neighborhood?
If we're talking about, it depends on the nature of the home. I mean, for example, if you have a single-family home and you bring in a roommate, you don't have to get city approval. And that's the way the court has determined that these Oxford-type houses are set up. It is just a couple of people living together. And good, bad, or indifferent, that's what the courts have decided. And so I'm not aware of any mechanism where a city has successfully been able to impose additional requirements on that.
Thank you. Well, what this does, Deputy Mayor Reed, is be certain that we can't put a full-blown shelter in neighborhoods by requiring it to go through the special use committee process.
Right, because a shelter isn't a permanent residence in these places. The Oxford Houses are permanent residents.
So can you give me an example of what we talked about when we say a day center?
A facility where individuals will come in for either meals or to stay the night on a temporary basis.
Gotcha. So we're saying we just got to get a special use to do that?
Yeah, it's not prohibited. It just has to come to us for us to do the same neighborhood impact that we do for crematories, marijuana businesses, things of that nature.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 10, we need to declare emergency. Do we have a motion for an emergency? I'll make the motion to declare an emergency. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second declaring an emergency. Further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the emergency passes. Item number 11.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4173A, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordnances, Chapter 80, Urban Renewal Authority, by amending Section 80-102, Urban Renewal Authority, adding subsection I, providing for an extension of commissioner terms in order to stagger vacancies, providing for repealer severability and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Thank you to members of the council. This is my agenda item. Let me start by saluting the members of the Urban Renewal Authority who have faithfully served in their capacity as we attempt to develop recessed areas in our community. It is unfortunate that four of the five urban renewal area members are rotating off of the authority at the same time. This is not the best way to ensure continuity needed to address retail and housing areas important to our residents. At the moment, the current interpretation of state statute does not allow for the extension does not allow for the extension of members into another term. However, I am asking this body tonight to allow staff to develop a plan that allows for staggered appointments to the Urban Renewal Authority to prevent the situation we face today with four of the five members leaving the authority. The reason why this is so critical is that at this time, we have nearly $60 million in potential retail and housing investment currently at play in the urban renewal area located on Shawnee Bypass. We have a responsibility to our taxpayers, voters, and constituents who have said unequivocally to this body, bring us more retail and bring us more housing. This cannot be accomplished with this type of turnover on an authority established to meet the critical needs of our constituents. Therefore, my motion is to direct staff to present recommendations to this body that will allow for staggered terms for the Urban Renewal Authority and that all of us with potential appointments hold off on them until we have adopted the plan as presented by staff. And that would be my motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. A couple of things with this. I don't know how we got here. But as I done the research, now this board cannot, if you serve your term, you can't.
Be reappointed.
Be reappointed. So in doing so, when we say we want to stagger the board, somebody has to come off. I mean, somebody has to come off. I don't think that it's fair to anyone, sorry for the overlook or whatever happened, but to be in compliance with all the rest of the boards and commissions and trusts, we have to let this thing rotate like it's supposed to. And I think that with proper leadership and leaving a couple of them on there to be able to simulate the information that this council can make good choices to continue the move-forward attitude here in the city in the urban renewal area. So I ask as well is that we don't, we shouldn't have to postpone our appointments a year out. I think you should be able to grant that appointment and move forward. Thank you.
Let me be clear, that wasn't my motion. My motion is that we allow staff to give us presentation on recommendations that will allow for staggered terms going forward and that we make our appointments after we have their recommendations on how the staggered terms should look.
Mayor, Councilor McGee, since we're talking about timeframes, I think we could have a plan drafted for your review in about a month.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to that item. Any further discussion?
Yes, can we make sure that we put that date in there for the month so this will come back? Please.
Mr. Tucker?
I gotta find the date.
Did you say the second council meeting of October? Would that be acceptable? That's approximately a month.
That's acceptable.
That'll be fine.
October 24th.
Okay. Everybody clear? Yes. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 12.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4174A, excuse me, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordnance, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Municipal Government Organization, by amending Section 2 dash 29, Citizen Participation Guidelines and Rules of Decorum, modifying speaking time limit and limiting occasions when rules may be suspended, providing for repealer severability and setting an effective date or take other necessary action.
Members of the council, this is my agenda item. Some have jokingly said to me, why have rules if they're not going to be followed? The current rules of decorum allow for residents to sign up for general public comments to speak to the council if they sign up 15 minutes prior to the beginning of the meeting. The residents are given three minutes to make their statement, but no dialogue is allowed between the resident and the council. That will not change. The current rules of decorum also allow residents to give general public comments to a specific agenda item if they sign up 15 minutes prior to the meeting. To speak to an agenda item, residents are allowed five minutes with members of the council having a total of five minutes to engage the resident in dialogue. That will not change. The recommendation is that we have no, the recommendation is that we no longer suspend the rules to add time to speakers or allow speakers to speak if they have not followed the necessary procedures to address the body and that the chairman of the meeting, where it is appropriate for public comment, have the discretion to allow a person to speak if their presentation is inherently to the needs of the city or during a time of public emergency. And that would be my motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, what are we changing? I mean, what's the difference?
The only difference is that the chairman of the meeting will have the full discretion to decide whether or not to have a person to speak if they have not followed the rules of decorum, if their presentation is inherent to the need of the city or if it's regarding a public emergency. So, for example, we had the representatives here from the Small Business Authority to talk to us about the FEMA money and SBA money that was available after the flood. That director had not signed up to speak, but because it was important to the needs of the city relating to a public emergency, we allowed that person to speak. And so the chairman of that meeting, whether it be public works or finance or council, whatever the rotation is at that time, will have discretion to allow that person the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And for clarity, Councilor McGee, the ordinance that was passed out, the changes are those that are underlined.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item number 12? Roll call.
I want to make sure that we're clear on the motion. So this is to, because Mayor, as I told you, the ordinance that was attached is different than the one I passed out. I made, I made additional changes based upon what your comments were. And so what we're needing to approve is the ordinance that was presented, not the one that was attached. So let's just make sure that the, the motion and second are clear in that regard.
Is the body clear on the motion and the second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 13.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2917, amending the City of Muskogee Municipal Budget for Fiscal Year 2022-2023, providing for the appropriation of funds received pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 into the American Rescue Plan Fund or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mayor, members of council. The attached resolution exhibit gives details about the specifics of the ARPA fund allocations. As you recall, American Rescue Plan provided funding directly to cities in a two-year increment. So last year, we developed a plan for those funds. We received the first year of funds last year. In the next few weeks, we should be receiving the second year of funds. We have to amend the budget to receive those funds and expend them. So what you see before you is the receiving of those funds, approximately $3.2 million, and the proposed expenditures, which mirror what was implemented by the city council last year. The only material changes really are to reflect the council's adjustment for the premium pay or the stipend to employees that worked during COVID. We had to adjust some of the numbers slightly to make those, make it balance. But that is all, that is different from what really was presented last year. We do have other rescue plan funding and grants available. We're pursuing through the state and are trying to add to this amount of money. Those will be identified for specific projects if we are able to get them. But this is money that is earmarked directly for us. I want to thank Jennifer Suizy, by the way, who's been our lead ARPA expert. And so if you have specific questions, she may be able to answer them better than I. Otherwise, we do propose receiving that money and happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Miller on tonight? The budget is on page 46 in your package.
Mr. Mayor, be recognized.
Yes.
On the line item, medical cost recovery, $723,000. What, what is our medical cost, what does that include? Because we have COVID sick reimbursement also at $42,457. So medical cost recovery, exactly what does that line item include?
That is the employee insurance plan costs. So costs related to employee insurance and claims, which increased during COVID naturally. And this is the second year of the $2 million. So it was smaller during year one. This is the larger section of that $1 million. And the first item is the sick time related to COVID. So it's reimbursing department wages when people used extra sick time above their allotted benefits.
I want to be clear also on the housing infrastructure. The half a million dollars that's listed on item 46, that, we had allocated 1.5.
That's correct. So the balance of year one is still in the account.
So this is only allocating the new funding? The money the council appropriated last year that has not been spent is still in those categories and restricted as designated by the council. So correct, there is 1.5 for that.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this item? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number 13. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati-Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 13 passes. Item number 14.
Consider approval to accept the lowest and best bid from Vance Brothers for the Northwest Zone Microsurfacing Project, number 2022008, in an amount not to exceed $1,578,378.15, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reeves.
Actually, Mayor, I'm gonna take the first half of that and Mr. Reeves is gonna assist me with it.
Thank you.
So I just want to give you a little bit of a review on our street program that, that we're discussing. So these slides go back to 2018 when we actually started discussing doing street improvement. And this slide just is a reminder that at that point in time, we discovered that we needed at least $68 million in deferred maintenance to start catching up. Slide that I'm showing you now is still fairly accurate. This is the funding that we have for traditional street funding and this is what we actually use for a maintenance program now, which brings in just about $2 million per year. So when we initially put the street program together, or actually the street committee, we decided to create zones for the city and that's how we ended up with the northeast zone, northwest, southwest, and southeast zone. At that point in time, when we were talking, we also decided to do this on an annual basis on these maintenance programs to help us catch up. And that's how we put the years on there. And we're pretty much in line with that. And I'll get to that in a minute because we're trying to make it go a little bit faster. But the map, if you can see, is also color-coded on the streets. And the greens are average maintenance streets and the reds are bad. And it's color-coded. That was done by infrastructure management who actually drove a van around the city and did a pavement index rating for us. So, and this is just a reminder that we have 310 actual centerline miles of street in Muskogee. That's all three classifications. That's arterial, residential, and collector. At that point in time, back in 18, we were looking at a 0.25% sales tax that was going to expire. And what we were asking for was an additional 0.33% to raise that to a 0.50% to increase the street improvement program. That did get approved, although it only got approved at the 0.33%. So that's what we're talking about tonight. The money that's going to be talked about to do the microsurfacing, the $1,578,000 is coming out of that 0.33%. And again, the current funding is 1.97 million or roughly $2 million a year. We do have that 0.33% sales tax, which is the 2019 tax, which was going to allow us to spend $6 million in each of those four zones. That's a match between the city and the Muskogee Foundation. It's actually going to run about $12 million apiece. Now, of course, that sales tax that's coming in, so we don't know that our share will be exactly $12 million. It may be a little more, it may be a little less. And the foundation is matching that. And again, we split that up into the four zones, so we're trying to spend $6 million per zone. So we did say, or I did say that there's 310 miles of city street. There's actually 230 miles of what we consider residential street. That's broken up into 178 miles of asphalt and chip seal. And by the way, we have quit doing chip seal, so that is now microseal. So that's split asphalt, microseal, and concrete. There's still chip seals out there, but we're getting them covered up with the microseal. When this survey was done, our average payment condition index was 56, with a 100 being a perfect street and a zero being just an impassable street. We had 82 miles that fell below, that's 60 PCI, and we had actual 45 that fell below 48. And by the way, our goal was to raise this up to a, above 70. So what we talked about doing was putting together a mill and overlay program that would do about 48 miles of those under that 45, 29 miles of the microseal. And then we were looking at trying to repair a bunch of concrete streets at 6 and 1/2 miles. Our goal, right now, or back then, our, our average PCI was 56 and we're trying to get it above 70. I think if it was actually done today, we would be in the mid 60s. We're working toward that goal. Also through this slide in to tell you that part of the money that we're expending is not just on the street surface, but we do have some traffic signal issues. And one of the traffic signal projects that's currently being funded through this program is that Four Corners project, where we're working to correct the traffic backup by the UP Railroad on Main, Broadway, and Callahan Street. And if you've looked or watched, it's working a lot better now with the improvement of that traffic signal at Cherokee and Court. Or Callahan, it's Callahan on that side. All this work was intended to be done by contractor. That would keep our street crews doing our normal work, our water cuts, potholes, concrete ditching. And it's helped tremendously, especially with the difficulty it is to hire employees right now. This has really helped to improve our streets and our complaints have gone way down. The six-year plan was to do 100 miles of residential street. We still hope to be able to do that. But with the rising cost of asphalt, asphalt, when gasoline prices go up, asphalt goes up. Our asphalt prices have almost doubled and it's kind of concerning. We may not make this 100-mile marker, but we're intending to try. The 24 million at 6 million per zone. And if you look on the right side, that's the northeast zone, which has mostly been completed. We spent the 6 million and it broke down that way with the mill and overlay at 3.4 million, microsurfacing at 1.6, concrete at 550. The Viadock, by the way, the Viadock was broken into all four zones. It's how we're paying for it. It kind of fit all four. But the northwest zone, we intend to spend 6 million. And so, so will we in the southeast and the southwest. One of the things I will point out to you, if you look in the southeast zone, which is on the right toward the bottom, we do intend to pay for that Country Club South project out of that zone money. So that will be something that will lower the amount that we do with the mill and the overlay and the microsurfacing. Tonight, we have before you the mill or the microsurfacing for the northwest zone. It's coming in right about $1,505,000, which is, if you watched, is what we spent in the northeast zone. So we're pretty pleased with that. And in saying that, I'll answer any questions you've got. But I think Jeff wants to present this actual item and then we'll come back for questions if needed.
Mr. Reeves.
Uh, the microsurfacing, I, I, uh, provided a list of streets that were approved by the street committee, uh, for this zone. For you guys, each one of you guys has one.
Mr. Reeves, I'm not sure if your microphone is on.
Okay, it's not on. Sorry. I provided a list of streets, or we did, for the microsurfacing project for the northwest zone. Um, and also, there, on the back page, it has the, um, water projects that we did in, and on these same streets, so that, uh, it can be verified that we did re- repair the water valve, water valves and any wat- line breakage on those streets. The, uh, streets on a, uh, square yard quantity unit price were consistent with the last zone, so we felt confident that these, uh, this was a good price. Um, it was bid out June 1st, and there were, uh, Vance Brothers did come in with the best and lowest bid. There were 13.75 miles of roads that will be micro-surfaced under this contract. The results of the project, okay. This, this zone has 75 miles, and the last zone, northeast zone, has 85 miles. So, um, staff does recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but one of the items that, uh, the manager asked me to explain, I forgot. Uh, just so you're aware, microsurfacing is a slurry mix. It's really just a sealer. It's about 3/8 of an inch thick with a small aggregate in it. This is the product that we chose to replace chip seal, which Muskogee, uh, did for many, many years. This is a better product. It, uh, it's in, we've been using it for many years. It's in the downtown district, and, uh, we're very pleased with the, with the product that we've got. Vance Brothers has been doing this work for us for years too, by the way, and doing a very good job. And we'll answer any questions.
Do we have any questions on this presentation tonight?
I'd just like to say thank you, uh, Mr. Reed and Mike, for, for your work, for what you've done.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on number 14?
Move for approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 14. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 14 passes. Item number 15.
Consider approval to receive $5,000 from Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group to be used for public works, safety equipment, trenching, and shoring protection, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
I'm actually gonna let Mr. Rigney, uh, present this. He worked on it, and very proud that he's, uh, bringing money in.
All right, so, um, this is the O-MAG Public Works Safety Equipment Grant, and, uh, we apply for this, uh, two times a year, and we usually get it, so if you've heard this before, be patient with me. Uh, we are going to receive $5,000 from O-MAG, and we will use that to purchase shoring equipment and use that in our Pollution Control Division for when they're working on underground lines. Uh, staff recommends approval, and is there any questions that I can answer?
Do we have any questions on item number 15, or do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 15. Further discussion. Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 15 passes. Item number 16.
Consider approval to repurpose the existing City of Muskogee Foundation's Downtown Redevelopment Grant to meet updated recommendations for downtown development, or take other necessary action.
This is my items, and members of the council, we bring this before you not only as a housekeeping matter, but as a matter to be certain that we are correct as we move forward. We've had this conversation on several occasions. We had an existing grant for downtown lofts with approximately $525,000 of that money unspent for that purpose. We ask for the Foundation's permission to repurpose that amount of money for downtown redevelopment, which was approved by the City of Muskogee Foundation. Since that time, we have been partnering with Muskogee Main Street to facilitate this grant specifically. Muskogee Main Street will be responsible for making recommendations to facilitate this grant, including facade improvement, recruitment of businesses to downtown, incentives to downtown businesses, and streetscape, to say the least. Some of them is, uh, the City of Muskogee will approve and authorize these recommendations on Muskogee Main Street in accordance with the terms as defined in the grant. So to clarify what we're doing moving forward, my motion is to allow for Muskogee Main Street to be responsible for facilitating the downtown redevelopment grant in accordance with the terms as approved by the City of Muskogee Foundation.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 16. Do we have any questions?
So are we saying that this downtown money is now, is going to be taken from the city, going over and be managed by the Main Street? Is that what we're proposing, Mayor?
No, we're saying that the money that was allocated to the city to do, uh, downtown lofts, uh, that those funds that were left over, uh, will now be administered by Main Street, but that the city will give final approval to the recommendations as they present them.
Uh, my understanding, downtown lofts wasn't 525,000, was it?
This is what was left, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, could we kinda explain that, uh, Mr. Miller? Uh, was that 525,000 for lofts only, or was the loft set aside for 100,000?
So this is, uh, leftover from a grant from 2018, 2019, I believe. Uh, the chairman of the foundation, uh, Ms. Stratton is here as well, and she's nodding her head. Um, so there was a grant reallocation along the way with that grant as well. And so that is the money that was left over. Um, again, this, and that dollar amount, some of that money has been spent in the past year in accordance with the grant as well for, uh, downtown, um, for the green space, for the electrification. And so, um, these are all guidelines and approximate numbers. Uh, but the, the intent here is that we use the money for downtown in the ways outlined, uh, in your agenda packet, um, working closely within partnership and collaboration with City Muskogee Foundation and Main Street Muskogee, and really is kind of, uh, a force multiplier. Uh, we don't have somebody at the city that's going out and knocking on doors to try and, um, get this grant out into the world. And, uh, Main Street will do that and be a good ally to us to accomplish our main goal, which is to, to revitalize downtown and use this money wisely to do that. Um, my understanding is they will make recommendations back to the city. The money stays at the city. If, uh, people meet those grant, uh, criteria, then they're eligible for the funding directly from the city, not from Main Street.
So, is that right, Ms. Nguyen? Okay, so my question is, so someone come up, downtown business come up, who do they go to? They go to Main Street, or they come to the city? What's the process?
So that, part, go, go ahead, Mayor.
No, I was gonna say, if I'm not mistaken, Main Street will have that process outlined and ready to made, uh, be made public sometime the first part of November. Uh, and then those grant applications will be made directly through Muskogee Main Street. And then, once they are allocated, uh, they will come to the city to final approval to be certain that they met all the guidelines that were presented by the foundation.
And then this still includes the facade grant, the, the facade updates and stuff like that, that the original request, like, for the original bounds, guidelines that was underneath the foundation, correct?
I don't know about the original guidelines, but for the repurposing of this grant, it does include facade.
That's correct.
I was just making sure, 'cause lofts and was the only thing that had, was mentioned.
Yes, that's my point.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second? Or do we just have a motion? We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item number 16? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 16 passes. Item number 17.
Discuss and take action to establish and populate a committee charged with evaluating and reviewing street lighting needs within the southwest corridor of the city.
Uh, councilors, uh, Deputy Mayor Reed and Councilor Boyadi Craig.
Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor and I had, uh, received several requests from several of our citizens in this quadrant that, uh, was concerned about safety and concerned about lighting. So what we would like to do is to, um, establish a committee that would evaluate the lighting in this area, in the southwest quadrant, to be used on existing poles. No additional poles, poles, just existing poles. We're not talking about lights that are out, that the citizens should call and report, but we're talking about additional lighting for the safety and security of the citizens in that area. As we move forward into the winter months, uh, we would like for this evaluation to take place because it gets darker sooner. And perhaps, uh, maybe we would be able to implement some sort of change in the spring of 2023.
Deputy Mayor. Very well said. Mr. Tucker, what action do we need to, uh, populate that committee? Or should we wait for, uh, Deputy Mayor and, uh, Ms. Boyadi Craig to make recommendations?
So the recommendations that I have received are that it would be a four-member committee populated with the Deputy Mayor, Councilor Bo- Boyadi Craig, a representative of OG&E, and a designee of the city manager. And so if those are still the recommendations, then an appropriate motion would be to, uh, establish the committee charging it with evaluating and reviewing street lighting needs within the southwest quadrant to be populated by the following members: Deputy Mayor Reed, uh, Councilor Boyadi Craig, a representative from OG&E, and a designee of the city manager.
Uh, Deputy Mayor and Ms. Boy- Ms. Boyadi Craig, is that a suitable motion?
Yes.
Uh, one of you gonna make that motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 17. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 17 passes. Item number 18.
Consider approval of an amended professional services agreement with Sean McKelvey, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, I had, uh, talked with you about this, uh, earlier, and, uh, we currently have a professional services agreement with Sean McKelvey to handle, um, some of our inverse condemnation lawsuits. What we're proposing to do is add, uh, the Earlhead Mall lawsuit to those professional services, uh, to allow him to provide representation in that matter. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion to that effect, or any questions for Mr. Tucker?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 18. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 18 passes. Item number 19.
Discuss and take action, including providing direction to staff regarding the establishment of nominating standards and criteria for appointees to city boards, commissions, and trusts.
Members of the council, this is my agenda item. As we consider the names of individuals recommended to serve on boards, commissions, and authorities, or committees, we should always make those recommendations in the best interest of the needs to the citizens of Muskogee. We realize that, uh, it has been difficult. It has been challenging at some points for us to fill so many vacancies. But my thanks to the members of the council who have worked so hard to make certain that those vacancies have been filled. Appointees, um, should not be due to personal relationships, friendships, or acquaintances, but because they are the best qualified person to meet the needs of the city and have the background and experiences to facilitate the work of the body to which they are being nominated. What I'm asking us to consider as a requi- as a requirement, uh, is that we adopt this criteria as we move forward. Number one, uh, in the criteria, is the appointment consistent with upholding our oath of office, which states that we will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, all laws of the State of Oklahoma, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, and that we will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to our office, and that we will faithfully discharge our duties as elected officials to the City of Musk- Muskogee. Second criteria, does the appointee have the necessary skillset and qualifications necessary to advance the mission of the entity, uh, or the body to which they are being nominated? Third criteria, does the nominee have a rapport within the community that promotes the good of the Commonwealth, unity within the community, and has served as an open advocate for the betterment of Muskogee? And then finally, the fourth, uh, requirement, is the appointment consistent with the standard of ethics for municipalities and elected officials established by the laws of the State of Oklahoma and ordinances and policies of the City of Muskogee, such that the appointment is not for personal gain and for the betterment of the citizenry of Muskogee? Each of us have our own conscience to deal with when we make an appointment, and this is not an attempt to judge that. But if a person is nominated to a body, and that recommendation is in the best interest of the City of Muskogee, by all means, we should say yes. But in the unlikely event that we run across a nomination where it is not in the best interest of the city, and it does not meet the needs of the citizens of Muskogee, nor the board, uh, or commission to which they are being nominated, then accordingly, we should vote no. And so my motion, uh, is that these nomination criteria be adopted, uh, as presented, uh, become a part of our process when we consider people for nominating to boards, commissions, authorities, or the like. And that would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 19. Any discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 19 passes. Item number 20.
Consider approval of the appointment of Duena Sinar to the Muskogee City County Port Authority and Muskogee City County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term, filling the expired term of Chris Connolly, beginning September 1, 2022, and ending August 31, 2026, or take other necessary action.
Ms. McGee.
Yes, this is my appointment. Many of you guys already know Ms. Edwin of the Sinar. I think she would serve well on that board, and that, uh, move for approval.
We have a motion on item number 20. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 20. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 20 passes. Item number 21.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Delby Walker to the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve a three-year term, beginning September 1, 2022, and ending August 31, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Walker's appointment had expired. She is eligible for reappointment, has been serving on this commission, and I recommend approval that she be reappointed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 21. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 21 passes. Item number 22.
Consider approval of the appointment of Lake Moore to the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board to serve a five-year term, beginning October 1, 2022, and ending on September 30, 2027, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, this is my, uh, agenda item. Uh, Mr. Moore is active in the community. I think he would do a good job of this, and it is my recommendation that he be appointed to this board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 22. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 22 passes. Is, am I clear in my notes that item number 23 is to be stricken?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 24.
Consider approval of the appointment of Steve Dennis to the Board of Adjustment to serve a three-year term, beginning September 1, 2022, and ending on August 31, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Hilton Flannery.
Yes, Steve, um, actually was serving on the city council for the town of Shakota and had to resign. He's been on there seven years, and he had to resign because he moved to Muskogee. So he's, I think he would be a good asset to the Board of Adjustments.
We'll take that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 24. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 24 passes. We have one resident having signed to speak to us tonight, Ms. Jane Holt. I'm gonna ask that you come to the microphone, give us your name and your address. Uh, you will have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Jane Holt, and I live at 3,800 Crestview Drive. I just moved in there a week ago. So I am the new manager of the Muskogee Public Library, and also a new resident of, of the town. So I am the new manager of the Muskogee Public Library, and also a new resident of, of the town. And public libraries, as you know, are very valuable resources for a community, and this public library is open 62 and 1/2 hours a week, which is pretty astounding from libraries that I have worked in. Uh, as you can see from the information sheet, I think we all, we all got one of these. Uh, the Muskogee Public Library is part of the Eastern Oklahoma Library System, and we have a strategic plan, and it's interesting that our strategic plan is in direct alignment with the, uh, Forward Muskogee Foundation goals. Uh, for instance, we collaborate with schools and local organizations and community groups to support services and provide meeting spaces. We support businesses with our free online career tools, such as Small Business Reference Center. We foster talent development through our literacy programs, including ESL and citizenship classes, both in person and online. In our maker space, we support technology and engineering education. As far as placemaking, we enhance the quality of life through our health and wellness programs, including our upcoming outdoor story walk program. And we also help market ourselves through social media, and, and we support the vitality and diversity of Muskogee through those efforts. Um, we offer all of these things. Most of these things are available at no direct cost to people that come to the library. In fact, our technology offerings save people a significant amount of money, and we've made a calculation on the other side here of what we do. More than 15,000 people attended programs at Muskogee Public Library in the last fiscal year, and our Touch a Truck event attracted 2,000 visitors, and a lot of them came from outside our community. It attracted outside visitors. Uh, public library is an economic and quality of life asset for Muskogee, and I look forward to working with the city council to enhance everything that we do. Uh, I want us to be a destination for the people in Muskogee, so that when they talk to prospective visitors and people that might be moving here, they'll say, "Oh, you have to see our public library, it's amazing." So even though our, our technology and our efforts are 21st century, our building is not. We do have, um, some issues with ventilation and some of our electricity, and we're working with the city to enhance those. So I want to invite all of you to come, each and every one of you, to come to the library so I can give you a tour and show you all the wonderful things that we can do for Muskogee and that we have been doing. And I'm, I'm really excited to be part of the future in, in a modern library that opens up our, our future and our economic well-being. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Holt, very much for your presentation. Item number 25?
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes,